Well, welcome. We continue to meet the people who are special in this town. And special because everybody or too many people say, "This should be fixed, that should be fixed, this should be done." But there's only a very small number who say, "This should be done and I'm willing to put the time and the energy in to make it happen." So tonight, we're gonna meet somebody who, running unopposed, so I can say is gonna be re-elected to the Select Board. Why don't we start with an introduction?
Thank you, thanks Al. Paul Mazakelli. And I'm, um, running for reelection to the Select Board this year. I have my first term is just about to end. And I'm starting my, hopefully, my second term in April. And I'm very fortunate and I'm very, um, uh, my gratitude goes out to the residents of Milford for giving me that opportunity again as well. As you know, Al, this is my forty-eighth year of serving the town. I started in nineteen seventy-seven as the health agent for the town of Milford. And I stayed there till, uh, for forty-two years. In that time, we accomplished quite a bit. And then from there, I was on school committee. I was also a commissioner, elected commissioner of the Housing Authority, Board of Health, and now the Select Board. So this is my fourth elected office that I have. And throughout those years, I've gained some serious knowledge and experience of serving the, uh, uh, public. And I've been in town all my life and it's just a great opportunity. And I'm very fortunate to have that opportunity, uh, to serve the residents of Milford. And I wanna actually give my knowledge and my experience to help improve the town, which I, which I have.
Now, besides being a kid from the Heights, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, just like I explained, I, I, I put my time in. Um, um, and throughout those various terms that I was elected and that I served, I gained knowledge from various boards and committees. Uh, I've also gained a lot of, um, uh, knowledge of serving the public and dealing with the public. And a lot that I learned, I learned from the residents of Milford. They were my teachers. Um, I was more or less their, um, I started off at a very young age. So they more or less raised me throughout the years, you know, to, to, to help, uh, uh, me in, in the positions that I am, to help them. Um, and like I said, I'll, um, I have no dog in the fight. Uh, I have nobody that I, uh, I'm politically involved with to take care of or whatever and whatnot. I do it because the, the people I have to serve and had to take care of are the residents of Milford. Um, and it's a town that I love, town that I grew up with. I, I have the institutional knowledge of, uh, throughout the years that I've served. And what would, uh, be good for Milford, what wouldn't work for Milford. Um, and that way there, it, uh, it, it helps make the decisions a lot better and a lot easier.
Now, besides being involved with all these municipal positions, you also became a mayor of the Prospect Heights.
Right. I was mayor of the Prospect Heights in two thousand fifteen. I was also, um, um, a, the, the man of the, uh, uh, Plains in two thousand and three. So there were two neighborhoods that I was involved with as, as well. Uh, and throughout those years too, I've also coached youth sports. Um, uh, both, um, uh, baseball from T-ball all the way to, um, Little League. And of course, Pop Warner, uh, throughout the years, eleven years with that. And I also was their treasurer as well. So I more or less was involved with the town, not only politically, but also on, on a civic basis as well.
Now, you kept, I mean, your family, a beautiful wife, two strong boys. You kept them in Milford. Why?
Because it's the town that I grew up in, the town that I love, the town that's been very good to me. And I wanted to be one of my sons to experience the same experience that I have, uh, in, in the town of Milford. And it's a wonderful town and I'd like to help make it as best as it possibly could.
Now, you're just finishing your three-year stint as Select Board member.
Yes.
Why do it again?
Why? Because I, I really enjoy doing what I'm doing, you know? I, I, I really enjoy being in this position to help the people. Um, like I say, it's, it's, it's something that, uh, throughout those years, we've, we've, we've done a lot, myself and the other two members, uh, Tom and, and, and Mike. Um, you know, from, uh, uh, helping the, the water company, uh, uh, get purchased and, and whatnot, to, uh, sports courts, to, um, various other things that, you know, that we started and, 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 and still are, uh, in the process of continuing to help make this, this, uh, town better. So yeah, I, I'd like to continue doing, doing what I'm doing. It's really, to be quite honest with you, the way I started off so young, serving the public, I think that's all I know.
Well, you know, it's interesting because when you think about everything you've been involved with, um, on the health board, you were the junior member with only thirty years.
That's right. That's right.
I always got a kick out of that, that when the health board would come here, Lenny and, um,
And Jerry Hennig.
And Jerry and.
And Kenny Evans.
Kenny Evans. Would introduce you as our junior member because you only had thirty years experience.
Exactly, yeah.
But you got involved early and I remember I laughed so hard when somebody said you were anti-immigrant. When you had the, um, the housing.
Oh yeah, the occupancy bylaw.
And I started laughing, saying Mazakelli is anti-immigrant?
Yeah, no, no.
He's against his own family?
Exactly, exactly. No, what, what that was all about, um, is at the time, um, we had a lot of overcrowding type of a situation. And that was caused by the international residents coming in. And of course, they were living with people that were already here, that came from the same, uh, part of the country that, that they came from. And, you know, of course, it caused a lot of overcrowding, uh, in, in, in various neighborhoods, uh, causing blight and, and whatnot. So what we did is we established an occupancy bylaw. One, one thing that also triggered that off too, is while I was with the Health Department, um, we didn't have a tuberculosis case since nineteen forty-seven. And, uh, back in two thousand and five, we had nine cases. And of course, public health-wise, anything above and beyond the average, um, um, rate of, of a certain disease is considered an epidemic. So we had nine cases as opposed to zero cases. And of course, we know that's a respiratory, uh, disease and it can spread through overcrowding, uh, and whatnot. And that's what we had. We had various overcrowding situations, um, people living in cellars. Landlords taking a lot of advantage of, of the situation as well. Um, I mean, we went to various homes where they had, uh, people living in a cellar with chronic dampness and, and, and dust and mold and whatnot. Um, and, um, charging them X amount of dollars.
But see, that, that to me was the big difference because we had a number of families that lived in our house when I was a kid. Because, well, whether you're Italian, Portuguese, when you came from the old countries, somebody had to sponsor you.
Right.
But it was one family.
Right.
It wasn't a landlord, an absentee landlord packing in five families.
That's what it was. And, and they weren't related either. You know, again, you had one particular room. Uh, first of all, what they would do is, you know, you'd go into a home, you know, typical two-family house with two bedrooms, one bathroom. And, uh, but they'd have a dining room in a kitchen or a living room in a kitchen. And they would make, um, four more little rooms out of that dining room. If they had a, a living room, uh, they'd make four more rooms out of that, you know what I'm trying to say? And they'd rent each one to individual people.
And that was the scary part from a pure safety point of view.
Right.
I mean, the average house in Milford back then had hundred, hundred fifty amps of power coming in.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's fine for one kitchen. You know, one set of appliances. But all of a sudden, when four or five families all have hot plates going.
Right.
At twenty, thirty amps each. It's just a matter of time before you overheat the circuits.
Exactly. And that, and that was our argument where that particular property was built for let's say a one, two, three-family home, plumbed, uh, wired, uh, for that particular use. So to go above and beyond that, you're putting that house in safety, uh, danger.
And like you say, when we, when you first came to us, I remember, God, this was decades ago, on the Finance Committee, and you said, "We need to ramp up the visiting nurses."
Yeah, you still remember that, right, yeah.
And, uh, there were people who said, "Well, why are we keep funding programs for immigrants?" And I laughed because I said, "Wait a minute. We can say we're doing it for the immigrants."
It's public health.
We're doing it for our kids.
Right, exactly.
Because that kid that's in this crowded home catches TB.
He's gonna go to school.
Then goes to Memorial or Brookside.
Right, right.
Right in the middle of all the kids from our own families. So it, it's not as clean and, um, wonderful as we think we are when we donate money to these causes.
It's true. It's true. And, and you guys did help us out with that. In fact, at the time, Al, we went from twenty-four thousand dollars to the V N A, I think to sixty-five thousand dollars. And for the simple reason, because where tuberculosis was starting to raise its ugly head in our town, uh, you had a, when, when you took the medication, even through contacts, even if you had it, that's one thing. But even if you had, if you were in contact with that particular person by living in the same house, you also had to take the antibiotic. And it's called direct observation therapy. You, you had to see the person take it.
Because they were saying a lot of the people were scared and would pretend to take the medication.
Right. And if you don't take it, it's only gonna get worse. So that's why we had to have the V N A actually observe you, the person taking it, to make sure that they did. That's how we got that down.
And again, it's great that we were doing it to help the new immigrants. But let's not kid ourselves. We were doing it to protect ourselves too.
That's what public health's all about.
It's the same thing with the, you know, having four families in a one-family home. There was just a fire waiting to happen.
Waiting to happen. And a few of, a few of them did. You know, and we were told the fire department would go into a house and they'd say, "Paul, we think it's, you know, a living room here, but there's four rooms in that place. We don't, and they're locked."
Yeah, the locks are always the telltale sign.
Right. You know, it was an illegal boarding house as well, as an illegal conversion. You know, and that, and that's a problem with our public safety. That's a problem with them as well. Not only that, but you look at the moral in, 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 uh, a part of it as well. I mean, you, you had like, uh, a mom, numerous times I, I came across it, a mom with a daughter and a son living in one room, no relation to the other people, and seven or eight males around there as well, you know what I'm trying to say? And not only that, but that, those, those students would like to have their friends over, they'd like to do homework together, like we used to do and our kids used to do. That's part of growing up. They couldn't do that.
But they're living like aunts to begin with. How do you invite people over?
Yeah, I know. Really, so that more or less.
After the initial shock, like I said, I got such a kick out of, "These people are anti-immigrant." And I was like, "This is Paul from the Heights?"
Yeah, no, no, it was.
With his family who immigrated here?
Exactly, yeah.
So he's against his own family?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
But here we are years later. And it seems to have worked out very well.
It sure has. Uh, it, 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 it really caught on, the awareness part caught, it took a while. When I take a while, several months for it to catch on. And, uh, there were a time when, um, before that happened, uh, like a realtor, let's say, would be selling a, a particular person a house, a two-family, let's say, and they go, "Well, it's this amount of money. Well, we can't afford it." "Oh, yes, you can. Uh, uh, you can make, uh, three rooms out of here." You know, that, and they'd actually be coached to, to see how, and, and that's what, that's what would be happening. So now, once this bylaw came in and we found, and, and they found out that it was being enforced as well, um, uh, they more or less understood. And when people would come in, they'd go, "I understand you have a bylaw now. What is it? We'd like to comply with it." Between real estate, real estate agents, uh, attorneys, um, investors, bankers, they'd come in and they'd, you know, come right to the Board of Health and ask these questions and wanna be in compliance, which means the education and awareness factor was starting to work.
Now, if you look and say, the biggest challenge you think you're gonna face? Because running unopposed, I can say, as the new Select Board member, what would be the biggest challenge you think you're gonna face?
Okay, I would say, um, the challenges that we have now, I, I, I would say would be fi- financial. Uh, right, right now, what I'm, I was thinking of, um, based on speaking to you and our Finance Director, uh, just recently. Um, there's gonna, we're, we're, two thousand twenty-four is gonna be a financial challenge for us. Um, and, um, that, and, and probably one of the biggest, uh, issues that we've had in quite some time. The only time I can remember when we had something like this here was when Prop two and a half came in, uh, where you had to, uh, maintain your budget within a two and a half percent over the previous year. And prior to that, we were going four, five, six, eight percent over and above that. And we had to more or less understand that. And, and I, and what I'd like to, to know is, you know, either from your, your self-ass chairman of the Finance Committee, as well as our Finance Director, is, you know, while the budgets are being prepared, which is this time now, to get the, um, um, department heads on board, to let them know that there is, that they, you know, they gotta be a little more aware of this. And more or less, when they're doing their budget, it's more of a need than what they would want. You know, and, and no matter what it is, I mean, if you wanna, we, we want this, this and this. Do you want it or do you need it? If you don't have it, what's the impact on the town? Because I remember when Prop two and a half came in, I remember the Finance Committee then wanted an impact statement on various, um, uh, services that the Board of Health, let's say, would provide. Do you need a dental hygienist? Do you need certain this? Do you need a transfer station?
That came up like, why do you need to expand V N A? We didn't know.
Right, right. So now you had the impact statement.
Now you came back to us and said what you just explained about TB, and it became a no-brainer.
Right, right. So that, that would be one of the, one of the, uh, major challenges that, that, uh, we would have. Um, some of the things I wanna look at down the road is, 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 is like, let's say, the, the parking si- situation that we have in town. Um, uh, and I'm not just picking on the white vans or anything like that. Uh, I'm typically gonna like these.
But they're the most obvious.
Right, right. But, but, you know, like these side roads and whatnot, there's double parking on each side. You're lucky one vehicle can, can, can get through. Um, not only that, but a lot of times you see vehicles parked on an intersection very, and, and you can't even, uh, as you're trying to.
It's hard to make the curve.
To make a curve, to even see that. So we're working a little bit with Chief Tuzino on that. And, and he's coming to us with various proposals or areas that he feels as though would be a, 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 a problem. And we're more or less correcting that, like a sign saying no more than twenty or thirty feet from the, or.
Corner.
Or else it'll be towed or whatever, uh, parking in front of, uh, people's driveways and things like that. That, that's something, and, and it is a problem, not because of the aesthetics, but because of the safety issues. You know, I mean, you're talking about emergency vehicles getting down there. Um, a, 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 a young child running, you know, through, through these cars.
Paulie, if my car can barely make it through and there's a medical emergency.
Right.
And the chief has to roll rescue one or engine one. How is, how are they gonna get even close to the house?
Right, right, exactly. You know, so these are the things that I'd like to, uh, um, address e- either, either through a study or through, uh, the, uh, comprehensive plan that we have coming up, that's due, it was, last time I did it was twenty, two thousand and three. And, and that's coming up and how that could be done. Or maybe just meeting with the police, uh, chief and his deputies, uh, on saying, you know, "What could we do to correct this?" Or, our zoning, you know, from what I understand, I don't know if I'm completely right, but from what I understand, if you own a, a rental property, you have to provide at least two parking spaces. If you have more than that, that's up to that other, those other tenants to find another place to park. You know what I mean? You, you probably shouldn't be parking on a side street, like either, you know, like, um, Pearl Street or.
Well, that was the first tip-off. You look at a house and you see eight cars around it. Okay, I don't know many of my friends who have six, eight cars.
Exactly, yeah, right. You know, so th- these are the things that I'd like to look at, you know? More or less, anything that's gonna improve the, um,
Quality of life.
The quality of life for, for our residents. And that's, that's what I try to do from day one. You know, let, let's try to, let's try to make their neighborhoods better. Let's try to make, uh, their life a little more comfortable for themselves, you know?
And you've got a reputation of not shying away from tough issues. Because that multiple-person ordinance in a home was very controversial.
Right. We, they, we were brought to court, Superior Court, you know? And, you know, we ended up winning, but still, it was, it was, it was stressful, but.
Well, I mean, it's gotta be hard on somebody like you. How do you explain to your two sons that people are calling you anti-immigrant?
Exactly.
And they're saying you're against my grandfather?
Yeah, no. Like I tell my kids every time they're enjoying something, "Thank God my grandfather caught that boat."
Besides which, Checker would beat you. You know, you sit there and say, "All of the people that we knew." You know, not even Cookie, but Cookie's friends and kids you went to high school with, they're all immigrants.
Of course they were, of course they.
You know, you sit there and say, "Cookie would have your head." Her friends like Checker and the crew would have all of our heads.
Yep. No, that, that, that's like, and one, another, the other thing that we're, we should be proud of too, Al, ourselves, is, uh, you know, because you were on the, like myself, were on the Police Chief's Election Committee.
Now, that amazed me. Because I heard all the negativity about the first one. And yet, you ran such a wonderful committee. There was no influence, I mean, the two police officers that were on there went out of their way to not try and say, "I know more than you do."
Exactly. E- each member was outstanding. And, and like I said, I was very lucky to chair a, a committee like that, someone like yourself on it and, 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 and the other individuals. Uh, I, I was very lucky to have that and it went very smooth. We got everything done now within eight months.
Well, the thing that amazed me was we went through the steps. And then it came down to, okay, we need to meet with the three finalists to pick three finalists. And we all looked at each other and said, "Wemmet, we've already done our job."
You already did it, yeah.
We don't have to interview these people.
No.
We've all agreed without, and there was no real contention, no.
No. And, and, and everything was done, I mean, I, I, I think they, they went through heck, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, candidates. Because as you know, they went first through the vetting process, you know, when they first applied. Then they went through a written, uh, assessment that questions that we more or less thought up and, and gave them and, and, and the, um, um, consultants put them in a questionnaire form. Uh, and then from there, they whittled that down from ten to whatever, I think it was six or something at the time. Then we did an oral, um, uh, assessment to see how well they do speaking as well, as opposed to writing. And then they did a, um, like an evaluation, uh, an, an assessment phase, uh, where they more or less gave them certain scenarios on how they would react if they were chiefs. And this, uh, commission or this consultant, uh, they were, uh, three, three police chiefs them, themselves. You know, so they knew right to, right to do, and we had, and again, it's not that we picked them because we knew them. We actually went out for a request for a proposal for that too. So we did everything by the book, everything right. And, and the money, I think it cost the last commission, from what I understand, the last committee, close to sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was fifty-some thousand.
I think it, it cost us like fifteen. And, and, and that was twelve went to the, no, it cost us fourteen because twelve or thirteen went to the, um, um, uh, consultant.
Consulting.
And, and I think the rest we did for, um.
But the thing that's amazed me is you put a group of people together. You'd expect one or two to be outliers.
Right, 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 right.
But you could see, we'd start with a group and everybody would discuss it and it would start to, the concentric circles got smaller and smaller. But nobody was saying, "I disagree. I don't like him or her."
And, and did you notice, everyone participated. There wasn't one that was shying away or all felt comfortable enough talking and whatnot. And the choice was fantastic, I think. Like I says, the Chief Tuzino's proving himself already, you know? Um, and like I says, it's a, a feather in the cap for myself and you.
That was another thing that made me feel good is that two Milford boys, or two Milford men.
And again, it's not that we had anything to do with that. They did that on their own.
But the fact that two Milford people made it to the finals. It's gotta be motivating to the, the troops.
Sure it does. The other, the other people, the other officers in there, absolutely.
And you think about it, both the Milford finalists knew Milford cold.
Yeah.
So you're not bringing somebody in from Alabama or Minnesota that doesn't know anything about us.
Sure. And, and to let the public know too, that, um, uh, a job description, uh, went out nationally. It just didn't, you know, like, uh, you know, we just didn't go out like in the Milford area or the Worcester, uh, uh, County or whatever. That went out nationally. And we did have people from Alabama and, and South Carolina or whatever applying as well. You know, so again, uh, we, we were an open book. Uh, everything went right out and, uh, uh, it was a great job everybody did.
One of the irritants around town are sports courts being opened in people's backyards. Now, you were involved in.
Yes, I, I got the, um, I got that passed out at one of our town meetings. Uh, for the simple reason, a lot of people were complaining, not only to the Select Board, but to the Board of Health. Uh, and they were, um, um, it was residential sports courts. And it wasn't like a typical little basketball court that you'd put up in your backyard for your kids to play and, and whatnot. Um, they, they were more or less, the whole backyard was asphalt. And of course, you know, by being an impervious material, when it rains or snow melts or whatever, you have that water just running right down into neighboring properties. Um, there's pollutants in the, in that asphalt as well. Uh, water table's not being recharged. They also had lights in some areas that would make Fenway Park blush. You know, shining in, shining into neighbors' properties. And it wasn't something that they did every now and then, because I remember when I was getting the sports court bylaw assembled by, uh, Town Council, myself and, and Larry Duncan, the Town Planner, and John Erickson. People would say, "Well, you know, you guys have your graduation parties, that's once a year."
It's once a life.
It's, it's once a year and it, and it get, and it's over at nine-thirty, ten o'clock the latest, you know? But these particular activities were going on every week from Friday evening.
Well, they were a business.
To Sunday evening in a residential area. And we have photos and, uh, videos of hundreds, I mean, I'm not using hyperbole. You're talking fifty to a hundred and some odd people in one area constantly, every weekend from, uh, uh, Friday to Sunday. Lights on till one, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, okay? Gambling, like you just said. It's not a residential use anymore. It's, it's a commercial use, okay? It belongs down Fino Field and they won't even let it go that long because they got neighboring properties in the area.
Well, I remember we were at a mayor's meeting and I heard all this noise and commotion. Because we were at the end of Korea Circle. And I said, "What's going on?" They said, "Oh, that's the volleyball games."
And, and you had.
And all the cars were parked on Mystic Lane.
Yeah, that's what, that's another problem too, was all the parking. Uh, we, you know, I'm talking, um, Bowden Drive, uh, Water Street, West Street, uh, Mount Pleasant Street, uh, Franklin Street. Uh, and Franklin Street was the, one of the reasons why the police had that, um, uh, uh, arrest that they made there in, in the investigation that they did, uh, several months ago. Uh, that was because of our task force that we reinstituted, as well as the sports court, uh, complaint. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's something that, uh, we're, uh, proud to have. And, and now it's starting to kick in a little bit. People are not put, because they were, they were, Al, they would have put them up anywhere.
Yeah.
They would, they would have put them up anywhere. And like I said, it passed overwhelmingly at the town meeting. Now we have another article going in through the planning board for the, uh, to readjust the lighting. Because they want, they want, they want to make it a little more stringent where these lights start shining on other properties. They're just shining on their property.
You go to put your, your kid in bed and you gotta buy blackout curtains.
Right, right.
Because like you say, the Fenway Park lights. Those floodlights make the room glow.
Right. Yeah, no, that, 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 that really helped. Again, you had, again, quality of life. Uh, people's, uh, were, their neighborhoods were being ruined. And it was starting to more or less catch on, not only just in one and two areas, it was starting to spread throughout the town.
Yeah, and I mean, it's not like we don't have Fino Field annex. If you want to have those kind of, now, not the illegal ones.
Right, right, right.
But if you wanted to go down and play volleyball or something. You could, because when we were kids, when my daughter was cheerleading. Heather kept us, made us put our cars on the edge of Fino Field annex so that these headlights would light up the field. So we were there till nine, nine-thirty. But never till midnight or.
No, no. No, like I said, it came too much. And then you had a lot of gambling. You had the illegal selling of, of alcohol, even, even selling cigarettes by the singles, you know?
Cigarettes by the single.
You know, so like I said, it, it became a business, uh, and, and something that, you know, we stopped, you know, with the cooperation of health, our task force and, and the, uh, Police Department really worked out well. And of course, Jerry and, uh, Town, uh, Town Attorneys did very well. Our task force and, and the, uh, uh, Police Department really worked out well, and of course Jerry and, uh, town, uh, town attorneys did very well too, Jerry and, uh, Brian.
When we talk about joint efforts, you lived through the COVID epidemic, pandemic. What was that like?
That, that, that was tough, because then again, we, we, we had, we had semi-training with that too, Al. Um, uh, for instance, if you remember the H one N one, or, uh, for lack of a better term, the swine flu, you remember that?
That was the first show we did on our medical show here.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah, and, 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 um, that helped us more or less clinic wise. You know, uh, to have the vaccine, thank God a vaccine was, uh, uh, available at the early part of the H one N one. Uh, so then when we had the COVID, and one didn't come for several months later or longer. And we more or less had to go through, I always said, you know, in public health school, you know, when it comes to, uh, a, 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 an illness or, or a situation. That there's no vaccination for, education and awareness is an aspect's thing, so more or less let people know. The universal health precautions, the masks, you know, uh.
Wash your hands.
Washing their hands and, 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 you know, the distances and, and all that stuff that you had to do, and that did help, then when we had our clinics. Um, you know, again, wh- wh- which was great, you know, I was glad to be in that position too, because I was on Board of Health and Select Board. A lot was mainstreamed, a lot went through quick, because, you know, the select, you know, I, I needed to get permission from the Select Board for something. Or, or the Select Board needed the Board of Health to, to do something, or they needed, uh, uh, advice on what the, if the town hall should be open. Uh, uh, to, to the public, or should town meetings be, uh, uh. Or, or, or remote or in person, see, these are the things that we had the access to right away, you know, and that, that really helped out. You know, it, it really did, and again, it was a challenge, um, and it was something that I don't think would face. Oh, for quite some time, because it really, it, 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 like I says, many, over a hundred Milford people passed. Be, be, because of that, you know, in, in, in a matter of the first year and a half. You know, how many after that, I don't know, but you know, that's the, just, 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 I used to follow, you know, and like I said, it, it, it was, it was tough. But we did it, but we did it, we worked together, highway work together, uh, health, Select Board, uh, zoning. Uh, police, fire, uh, everything, our own, like in life, we, we host a hospital, you know, everything, everything worked out well.
Now, you brought up the whole financial challenge, because this year will be the first year. That I can remember, well, since two thousand and three, when Romney cut our budgets in two thousand and three, so it's been twenty-one years. That we don't have the money to do everything. But there's certain things that, well, let me ask you, Central Street Bridge.
Very, very important, and you know why too, but I'll, I won't let the public know too, very important, because we, 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 we got a, uh. Five hundred thousand dollar grant for that, that has to be used by a certain date, and, um, i- i- and that date's coming, coming up quick. And again, uh, the, the bridge is definitely needed, you know, for safe and reasonable passage, uh, and, um. That's something that we have to really, that, and remember I mentioned the, 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 the want and the need, that's a need.
Yeah, closing, I don't think people, first of all, know that we have a Central Street Bridge. It's more like a Central Street Tunnel.
Tunnel, yeah, exactly.
At the, at the end of, uh, Fino Field or right by the Highway Barn. It's a tunnel.
It's a tunnel, yeah.
But we're now on notice that they're inspecting every couple of months. Cause there's so much concern that that thing's gonna deteriorate.
It's gonna deteriorate, exactly, that has to be done, that's a need, and that's something I, I think, I think we're talking, as you, you know, too, uh, about a million dollars.
Million three.
How much?
We originally, town meeting approved one point seven million, cause that was the estimate. All the bids came in at two point nine to three million. So we're gonna have to come up with between a million and a million three.
Three, so that's something that, again, that, you know, we, that, to me, that would be something that we would have to.
It's kind of a no brainer.
No brainer, or we're gonna lose five hundred thousand dollars too.
Yeah, but something five hundred thousand, closing Central Street. For years.
Yeah, forget it, you know, how, you know, you know how busy that street is when people go up to the.
Can you imagine what Main Street would be like if you took all the traffic from Central Street over?
Right, right.
The next one that came up from highway was the Culvert on Water Street by the old phone company.
Right, right, and that's because of more or less spillage and a lot of flooding as well.
It's all collapsing in, but again, when we budgeted it, when we had town meeting approve it years ago. It was four hundred thousand dollars cheaper. So we gotta come up with four hundred thousand for that.
And again, quality of life as well, for the simple reason, the Mayhew Slip area, that, that whole area gets flooded. You know, when that, when, when you get some sort of serious rain, like we had in the recent past. You know, and that's something that, uh, like I said, we waited too long already.
Yes.
For, 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 for something like that.
Well, a lot of it, when you look at the Godfrey Brook and all, way back when, decade ago, we said it'd be twenty-five million to fix it. But Scotty's been getting grants.
Yes, he has.
And we've been doing it according to the, like you said, we get half a million dollar grant, we supplement it with another bit of money. And we get further down the line.
Right.
Than we would if we had to try and do it ourselves from scratch.
Right.
Uh, another big one that's outside the existing budget proposal. Feasibility study for the high school.
For the high school, yeah, what's that, one point seven?
One point seven, one point seven five. Comment?
Yeah, it's another challenge, you just mentioned, that, that is a challenge, yes, it is, um, yeah, I mean, um. Yeah, that's something, uh, again, need, a, a, a want, the school was built, what's that, nineteen seventy-three? Fifty years old right now, fifty going on fifty-one, um. It needs a lot of repairs, uh, probably, if you're not gonna build a new one, uh, our population has grown in the past fifty years for the school population. Um, you don't wanna be under housed either when it comes to education.
Could we build a new school in your mind?
I don't think so, no.
Where would you put it?
Where you're gonna put it is right, right.
The only place we have enough dirt is Asylum Street. And can you imagine what would happen in those university streets?
I know.
If all the high school seniors come driving through there?
Exactly, yeah, no, no, I, I, I don't think, I don't think we have that, um, um. It's not physically possible right now, you know, uh, for, for, for a new school, but to renovate it. And to add different, uh, I know, I know Dr. McIntyre was explaining at one time, I heard him. Um, more or less putting in like more workshops and whatnot for the non-traditional students, which I think is a fantastic idea. You know, but, um, again, the feasibility study, I think is needed, you can help me out probably better than that than I, but. It's probably needed in order to get any.
You have no choice, if you wanna participate. Now, it's estimated, well, a new school, you know, people said, how do you know how much it'll cost? I don't, but Tri County down in Franklin. Just voted a new school, three hundred fifty-five million. Haverhill turned down their new, um, woke school, it's four hundred and fifty million.
Where do you get that money?
Well, that's.
You know, really, I mean, I, I don't know.
You know, again, if you start thinking about renovating, it's still crazy number at a hundred eighty million. And that's a guess, but.
Guess.
It's a lot better than guessing at three fifty or four hundred.
Exactly, I mean, that's an awful lot.
But we got invited by the School Building Administration. To submit a bid, first step in the bid is feasibility.
Feasibility study, yeah.
Now, we did put money away, because people have asked, they remember that three years ago, four years ago. When we had a surplus, we put money away for the feasibility study.
I remember you saying that.
And yes, we can use that money, but if we use that money for that, that's less money we have to put towards building the high school.
Exactly. Yeah, but then again, you need one, you need one to do the other.
Yeah, I, I can't see, I agree with you, I can't see an option. Because we certainly can't, I mean, the schools, if we don't renovate the school or build new, I'm saying renovate. You're gonna have four to five, the roof alone, Blackstone Valley is submitting, uh, a proposal to the thirteen towns. That's ten million dollars just to do the roof.
Wow.
I mean, the numbers are going crazy.
Going crazy, yeah, and like you said, th- th- just this year here, isn't the year to, to, we, we gotta live within our means. If, if, if any year.
And this year, the school committee was expecting, initially was being told, we're gonna get eight million dollars incremental. And my, I tip my hat to them, because when we went to have a financial discussion with them, I thought it was gonna be tough. And McIntyre, Kevin and, um, Chris Wilson started off saying, we know that. This year is gonna be a very big challenge. Because the governor originally said she would hold the money, and we would, Milford would get an extra eight million. Yeah, they said four percent. So the school committee came back with, well, we can cut down to seven percent. And we were hoping they would stay at six and a half, so it's still a little bit of wiggle.
Wiggle, yeah, yeah.
And that one percent is seven hundred thousand dollars. So we're within three hundred fifty thousand of each other.
Each other, right.
Which compared to all the schools around us. We're in a lot better stead.
Better shape right now, yeah, but still, it's something that we gotta watch all the time too, though, we can't let.
And then you've got the police, when fire, fire chief came to us. And that's an interesting one, because people don't really think, well, we don't have that many more fires in Milford. But we need four new firefighters. And they don't think about the fact that most, eighty percent of the firefighter's job is medical.
Sure it is, yeah, and not only that, but I remember when, um, uh, the chief, uh, came to, uh, Chief Nelson came to the, uh, Select Board meeting. With that plan that he had, he wanted, he wanted to more or less hire some, um, captains, he wanted to make it where, where they have a.
Reorganize.
Reorganize with, 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 with captains as well as the lieutenants, because if you have the same rank. You know, at the same shift, who's the boss, you know, and, and, and that's, and that's a problem that, that, that he was thinking, and he said, let's go with the captain. And, and, and a couple of captains for the two stations, uh, and, and, and whatnot, and, uh, we thought it was a grand idea. Then he also mentioned too, how, um, the ladder truck is only manned by one person.
One person.
One person, which I thought was a, was a safety concern, which is why I said, you know, and my other two colleagues said as well, you know. Um, why don't you just go for it now instead of waiting, and, and thinking, you know, providing the monies there, you know what I'm trying to say? It's something that, at least try it.
If it was years before where we had four, five, eight million dollar surplus, the logic is sound.
Right, cause I think you only wanted a million at, at the time, you know, but, but anyway, yeah, that, so that's something that, you know, we thought about, you know, safety concerns and, and whatnot. But again, if, like you mentioned before, if that can be done in piecemeal, where instead of having, um, um, four, have two. You know, start off with that and see how that works, and then add on as the time goes on.
Well, and again.
Get better.
Tip my hat to Milford department heads or chiefs or whatever, because. Mark, Chief, um, of the Fire Department came and said, it's not ideal. But if that's all the town can afford right now, we'll make it work.
Sure, that, that was fantastic, right.
What more can, what more can I ask?
A great team player, that's right, you can't ask for more than that.
It's the same, cause again, with the town growing, maybe we don't have any new buildings, so the amount of fires. Are stable. But the medical calls go up with your population.
Medical calls are up, and even like I says, you, maybe not a lot of building fires, but a lot of house fires too, maybe, you know what I mean? Uh, there was one just on, on Lee Street, on our old, the neighborhood there, uh, uh, one of the, a big barn was, was on fire.
Oh, wow.
They blocked off West Street and Lee Street and all that area, you know, and, uh, you know, like I says, I mean, you're still gonna get your fires. Uh, your accidents, uh, uh, and, 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 and things, and things like, like that, so, like I says, our, 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 public safety wise, we're in good hands. And, and as a Select Board member and as a chairman of the Finance Committee, I'm sure that comes first, you know, when it comes to, um.
And that was one of the questions is, are we giving up anything by not moving right now? And the chief said, yeah, but not critical, I could live an extra year, it's like. Before Chief Nelson, when we had two Erev one and two Erev two. We could have honest discussions to say, do you really need that engine this year? And they'd come back and say, nah, we could go another year, cause they knew that we weren't gonna penalize him. We're gonna save that money, so the next year when he says, yeah, we need it. It's there. Same thing with police, and people have to understand that to add one officer, you have to hire four. Because Chief Tassino will not issue the memo that said, crime can only be committed between eight and five, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You know, you gotta, you gotta, man him twenty-four hours, seven days a week, that takes four people. But again, the question comes up, if we can't afford it all this year. Can we do a down payment? Now, I haven't talked to the chief yet. But I feel comfortable that he'll work with us.
Yeah, I think he will, I think he will.
And then geriatric.
That's, that's, that's been a concern for a lot of people for quite some time. And, um, in my opinion, I think it's something that, uh, we should address this year, one way or the other. Um, and like we were mentioning before, one of our meetings, um, you know, there's, 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 there's two factors to look at, there's the emotional factor and the financial factor. And you're gonna get some people saying, you know, we gotta keep it open, my mom was there, or my, uh, um, uh, father or grandfather, aunt, uncle. Well, whatever, um, uh, and then, then you have the other side, which is the financial side, which is two to three million dollars a year. That, you know, uh, uh, the, the people are asking us to come in, believe me, the, uh, trustees on that commission are second to none. You know, believe me, anything that's, that's, uh, going, uh, financially, uh, uh. In a different direction there is not their fault, you know, to be quite honest with you.
That they've kept the place open. With the, one of the last two non-state controlled funded. And the whole state.
The whole state.
There's us and I think Nantucket.
And, and, and you take it statewide, Al, or you take it nationwide, just a little background. Um, you don't, you, you don't have the patience like they used to have when we were younger or, or our parents were, were, were younger. When our grandparents would have to go there or whatever, um, it, 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 it's, it's, it's a whole different, um, uh, life now, I mean, um. Insurance companies are controlling the industry, the healthcare in, industry, and what's happening with that is, you go to get surgery. You gotta do some rehab, you, they're not gonna, they're not gonna send you to the, uh, geriatric.
No, my mother had a week. When she had her knee replaced.
They're gonna, they're gonna send you home, after, the quickest time they can, they're gonna send you home with the physical therapist going there to your home or whatever. People are, and, and our, uh, contempor, our contemporaries, we're, we're more or less living, trying to take care of ourselves more, we're staying home more. Uh, i- i- and they have these, uh, services like Little Angels coming in to take care of you instead of you going to a nursing home. You, the, the, our generation is, is at home more than they're being taken to a, a nursing home or, 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 or a, um. Uh, uh, another, uh, uh, facility, uh, and, and, and that's what's happening, uh, and it's not just in Milford, it's not just in Massachusetts. It's nationwide, the industry is not doing like it used to do, and again, um, again, it, 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 it comes to that. Um, question, is, is, is it emotional or is it financial? Uh, to me, if it's financial and, and, and we're spending two to three million dollars a year. If we do it this year, you can rest assured, we're gonna do it in the, in the, in the few years coming up too, i- i- as well. So does the pu- when I say the public, does our town meeting members who have the ultimate say. Uh, want to continue that, where other, like we were just saying, if we're gonna be spending two to three million dollars a year for god knows how long. Other departments and other services are gonna be hindered.
We're gonna come down to, it looks like, do we do police and fire? Or do we do the geriatric?
Exactly.
Do we do the geriatric or police and fire, and, or do we do the school?
Right, and, 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 you know, uh, to be quite honest with you, when it comes to a financial, um, decision. That affects the whole town. When it comes to an emotional decision, that affects a small population.
Well, and again, I cannot be unbiased when I think of countryside, my mother, they took care of her till the day she died. Fantastic what they did with my mom, and it was wonderful, because I'd come home from work, drive one mile, and I got to see my mother every night. You know, so you can't take the emotion out, but on the other hand, I worry about the people who are, who built Milford. You know, who are living on social security. And it's not like that's a lot of money left over.
No, and we, 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 we're discussing, for every million dollars, there's eighty dollars on your taxes.
So last year, we added two hundred dollars to everybody's taxes.
So, so now you go, you go, you go to, to three million, and, and now you're close to three hundred, you know what I'm trying to say, so.
And half of that is not Milford.
It's another thing, and, and it's something that I'd like to have straightened out this year, at one of the town meetings, be it May Town Meeting or the October Town Meeting. Let's straighten this out once and for all, let's get our town meeting members well aware. So any decision they make, when they vote yea and aye, is done with knowledge and fairness.
But see, there's the key, the knowledge, you know, the old saying, two reasonable people equally informed. But see, there's the key, the knowledge, you know, the old saying, two reasonable people equally informed seldom disagree. The key is to be equally informed. Because three million dollars, it's a problem, but we'll get over it. Two years from now, we're gonna add seven million.
That's what I'm trying to say.
An interest.
If 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 it's done this year, you can rest assured that every, every year from now until god knows when, this is gonna be.
But we know in two to three years, the high school interest is gonna add seven million. Now, we've been averaging between three and eight million dollar surplus a year. Well, the high school alone's gonna eat that up.
Right, right.
Few years ago, you, Select Board, went way out on a limb. And said, we should spend the most money we've ever spent as a town and buy the water company. Comments?
Yeah, I thought that was, that was a good move, like I says, it's something, you know, uh, that I felt as though that. It would help the quality of water, because don't forget, when I was with the Health Department. Uh, there were a lot of times we would get complaints on water, be it uh discoloration, uh, a a high chemical. Uh, when I say high, you know, above, above the uh, uh, mandated uh, uh, level. Uh, uh, and people would be calling up, and then I'd call the privately owned water company, sometimes, Al, I wouldn't get a response.
I was gonna say, you got them to answer?
Yeah, that's what I mean, I mean, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get a response for for quite some time, and this is the Health Department calling for your water.
Yeah, you had some clue.
You know, and 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 then to get things done and to get uh, uh, various questions answered and whatnot. Um, and believe me, uh, Dave Contry did a great job, even when it was working for the private water company. Uh, and and thank god that we still have him, but again, I I, and then again, we we had no control over the rates. I mean, we do with the Department of Utilities and all that, I understand that, but um, i- it's something that we have more control over now. We have a a a a three-member commission, uh, that we could more or less uh go to if we have a concern. Uh, it it just gives us more of a, of an ownership.
And their family. I mean, when you think of Jonathan. You know, you think of Jamie.
Right, Philip.
And Phil, Sarah McCole. They're Milford people.
Right, right.
They have a stake in here, they have their families here. I feel a lot better counting on them to watch out for me. Then, I mean, the board of the White Company. Their allegiance was not to Milford.
No, it was profit.
It was to their stockholders.
Exactly, exactly, so that's the way, we 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 have, we have that concern, like you said, the the allegiance now. And 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 I think it's something that was long overdue, we did it. Um, and um, I I think so far, so good, it's working out well from what I hear.
What we've seen, I mean, some of the people got upset because their rates went up thirty percent. And you felt like saying, but you don't understand, the previous company was looking to raise your rates fifty to sixty percent. So even though they went up, they went up a heck of a lot less than they could have.
Right, right, and there's a, there's some infrastructure, that's one that I think the capital projects too, that's listed uh, uh, from the Finance Committee. Um, to more or less upgrade some of the uh, uh, equipment and and whatnot at the water company.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a history, when you look at the Sewer Department. They haven't raised their rates in like eight years. Which is scary in itself, but it still says something about when you have. John, you know, you got my nanny and the crew in there, Rudy and the crew running the place, they're Milford people. They're watching out from their, it's not even watching out for Milford families, it's their.
Their own family, exactly, right, same thing with the water company, you know, but like I said, that's something that, uh. Like I said, I'm I'm glad we we did it, I was for it, something that I inherited as I got on, but we more or less, we pushed it through. You know, as uh, uh, the, the, uh, for that year, and it and it worked out well, and again, it's still working out well, let's hope it keeps up.
We talk about municipal electricity aggregation. What's that?
Okay, what what it is, that's a um, um, uh, a plan that we had. Um, I remember I was getting, uh, just this past winter, uh, uh, last year, rates were going through the roof. And I, we got a, I got a few calls from um, our residents, and they said, you know, I was watching TV. And um, uh, the news was talking about, you know, let's say Fox News or Channel Seven, whatever, was talking about the high rates of electricity. And one of the commentators said, um, you know, the, you 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 can, you can uh, enjoy, enjoying this program. Uh, that they, that they have, um, uh, and um, see if your city or town is um, part of it. So I got a call, I says, no, no, we're we're not, but I'll look into it, and I did. And come to find out, we, I talked to Rick and my other two members, and we had the um, a representative come in. From one of the companies that would do this for us, and what it is, is uh, we, we, we buy uh, uh, electricity. Uh, uh, in bulk, in other words, the town in Milford would buy it, or we'd also share it with, let's say, if Hope Dale's part of it, or Bellingham's part of it. And, you know, we'd, we'd, we'd buy it in bulk, when you buy in bulk, you get it for 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 less per kilowatt. So hopefully, you know, um, once it's, it kicks in, right now, we're at the last stage. Uh, first stage was getting it uh, passed at Town Meeting, the second stage was to uh, hold a um. Uh, to get a draft out, hold a public hearing, which we did about the draft. And now they've presented that draft plan to the Department of Public Utilities, they're reviewing it, and once they review it and approve it. Then we'll get in, we will get online, hopefully, they said if things go well with the Department of Utilities, which it should. But depends on how fast they are and or how slow they are, um, we would have it, hopefully, by this next heating season next year. So again, we have that opportunity to lower our.
But there's no downside, if you don't wanna play, you don't have to sign up.
Play, and if you don't wanna play, or if you did play and now you wanna get out, you can come back again too.
Oh, even better.
Yeah, yeah, and and again, it's for small businesses as well, not just uh, re- re- residential. And uh, like I said, it's it's a decent, decent plan, and I think um, that, uh, right now, we have close to a hundred cities and towns that have, that are doing it throughout. Throughout the state.
Well, we're at a point where I'm gonna ask you a question. I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
I hope after this time, I convince them. Anyway.
And it's not because I have no other choice, cause nobody else is running.
Right, they can all vote for for blanks, but I'll be a little mad, but but anyway, um, yeah.
Well, at least you'd get Cookie in the book.
My sons will even vote for me, but anyway, uh, anyway, I I do appreciate that the 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 confidence that the residents do have. Uh, in me, uh, again, and 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 by appreciating that, I I will not let them down. Um, the years that I've spent serving them, I really enjoyed it, and I felt as though they're, they're my boss. You know, uh, they're, they're the ones who I have to answer to, they're the ones who I wanna make sure their quality of life is better. And I'll do whatever I can for that, or or for them, you know, that's legal. Um, and if they have a suggestion for me, I'm all ears, I I love listening to them, again, throughout my years where I started so young. I learned from our public, they're the ones who taught me, more so than a college degree, they taught me how to, um, um. You know, uh, be a good public servant, you know, how to serve them. And um, again, I I I I'd continue what I'm doing, if if not, I'll, I'll, every year, I try to raise that bar even higher. You know, so I could more or less uh, be a better public servant to them.
Well, the first part the, of the vote is that. You've proven yourself over forty years.
I hope so, yeah.
You know, and. Nobody's running against you, that says something.
I, and I appreciate that.
If people were not happy with what you've done or what you stand for. You know, then you'd have opponents. You don't. So that's a vote of confidence already.
Right, and I appreciate that vote of confidence, and I wanna go that extra step for him too.
Well, the best to your family for putting up with everything you had to do for these years.
I know.
Cause we always forget what kind of um, demands we put on, you know. So I wanna say personally, thank you for everything you've done, look forward to three more years. And to our six loyal viewers, plus his wife Cookie. And maybe the boys. Well, if you get your wife to watch, you're doing better than I am. But as always, thank you for joining us, I'll never ask you to vote for. A specific candidate, but I'll beg you to get out and vote. So may god bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, good night all.